Welcome to the Tuesday, January 21 organizational and regular Board of Education meeting. If you would take a minute to silence your cellphone and then join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jen, would you take role for us, please?
Absolutely. President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Treasurer Lotterback.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Craig.
Here.
Member Horowitz.
Present.
Member Ringgold, here.
Thank you very much. And item 1.2 is the ceremonial oath of office for both Mackie Craig and Anne Horowitz. You would join Sarah in front of the podium, please. Welcome to the board, Mackie, and congratulations on the reelection, Anne. Item 2 for action is the election of a temporary chairperson as we have our organizational meeting this evening. The meeting shall be called the order by myself, the ranking officer of the proceeding board, to serve as the presiding officer until the election of a temporary chairperson, who shall serve in turn, who shall in turn serve until the election of a president. I have a motion for myself as the temporary chairperson.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Lotterback, support by McFarland. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item number 3 for information identification of the district's legal status under the revised code, under the revised school code, MCL 380.1, the district's legal status was defined as a general power school district effective July 1, 1996. Item number 4 for action, election of officers of the board. Election of officers of the board as outlined in Board Policy 2506. A three-person Board of Education nominating committees submitted a proposed slate of officers for 2025. The proposed slate is as follows: President Phil Roush, Vice President Scott McFarland, Secretary Jennifer Ringgold, and Treasurer Jonathan Lotterback. I have a motion to approve the slate as proposed in item number 4.
I'll move to approve the slate as proposed in item number 4.
Support.
Motion by McFarland, support by Horowitz. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 5 for information, appointments for 2025 study committees. The 2025 study committee appointments are as follows: Administration, Administrative Services, myself as chair, serving with Anne Horowitz and Jennifer Ringgold; Finance, Facilities, and Operations, Brad Blasey as chair, John Lotterback and Scott McFarland also on the committee; Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Jennifer Ringgold as chair along with Mackie Craig and Brad Blasey as members; Human Resources Chair Anne Horowitz, serving with Mackie Craig and Scott McFarland; Other Committee Appointments are as follows: The 2025 Gerstacker Teacher Proficiency Awards, John Lotterback; 2025 Distinguished Service Awards, Phil Roush; 2025 Administrators Inspiring Excellence Award Committee, Jennifer Ringgold; 2025 Advisory Board on Instruction and Sex Education and Birth Control, Jennifer Ringgold; 2025 District School Improvement Committee, Brad Blasey; and finally, 2025 MPS School Board Association Reps at the Clare Gladwin RESD, Phil Roush and Scott McFarland. Item number 6, scheduled meetings for the 2025 calendar year are as outlined in your board packet, as proposed, with the notable difference being April 21, 2025 to start at 6:30 instead of 7, as it will also be our budget workshop. I have a motion to approve the dates of the regularly scheduled board meetings in item 6.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Lotterback, support by Ringgold. Any discussion or needed changes in item 6?
Phil, I might just, as a reminder, offer that that February date is a Tuesday, which is not typical. That's because we don't have school on that Monday.
Thank you. All in favor of item number 6 as proposed in the agenda packet, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 7, 2025 Appointments, Designations, and Board of Education Matters. Item 7.1 for action, appointment of the Board of Education's Legal Counsel. The firm of Thrun Law, PC, has been designated as the board's legal counsel. In addition, the superintendent is authorized to retain specialized legal counsel through other legal firms as appropriate. It is recommended that the board approve legal representation as outlined through December 31, 2025. Motion for 7.1?
So moved. Support.
Motion by Lotterback, support by McFarland. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I don't, certainly Scott and John and Mackie can weigh in, but I've never seen a firm that charges a fee upfront and then charges you hourly, so I think that we might want to push back on that. It's not, it's not a substantial fee, but we're already paying them to do hourly work, so I'm not really clear on why we have to pay them that upfront fee.
I can certainly look into that.
Good question. Any other discussion? Noting the follow-up, all in favor of approving item 7.1, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. 7.2 for action, Fiscal Designations and Authorizations, Penny.
It's recommended that the board designate Huntington Bank and any other public depositories qualified in accordance with MCL 380.1221 of the Revised School Code of Michigan as approved depositories of school district funds through December 31, 2025. The treasurer of the Board of Education is the legal financial officer for the school district and as such is authorized to sign checks for Midland Public Schools. The superintendent and associate superintendent for finance are the only members of the staff authorized to sign checks for the Midland Public Schools. It's recommended that the board approve this authorization through December 31, 2025 for these staff members.
Sir, can you hear everything? I see you.
A bit hard to hear.
Do you want to move up, or I mean, is there something we can do to? Maybe we can turn the speakers up?
Yeah, Dave's, I see Dave nodding. And I'll move my microphone closer and we all can as we converse tonight.
Thanks, Penny, sorry.
No, that's good feedback.
Thank you. I have a motion for item 7.2.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ringgold, support by McFarland. Any discussion on 7.2?
I don't have any discussion on the merits of the, of item 7.2. I am going to abstain Huntington Bank as a client of my firm and I don't, I just won't vote on awarding them this relationship.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
One abstention.
One abstention, motion carries 6-0. Item 7.3 for action, Personal Authorization, Personnel Authorizations, Penny.
I'm going to lean into my mic a little more and use my teacher voice. The board in previous years has authorized the superintendent or designee to sign any legal documents relating to personnel actions which the board has approved. This authorization has been made at the organizational meeting for the entire year rather than granting the authorization at each board meeting. It is recommended that the board continue this authorization through December 31, 2025 to the superintendent or designee. It is further recommended that the board delegate authority to accept resignations and retirements to the superintendent of schools or designee through December 31, 2025. Resignations and retirements will be reported in subsequent agendas.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for item 7.3?
I'm moved. Support.
Motion by Horowitz, support by McFarland. Any discussion on 7.3?
The first paragraph relating to personnel actions which the board has already approved, so you can only do that when it's, you have written approval and a motion of approval from this board.
That's a question you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, let me, let me read it again. The board in previous years has authorized the superintendent or designee to sign any legal documents relating to personnel actions, so I would consider this to include employment contracts and things of that nature.
Well, the very next word says which the board has approved. So you're only allowed to sign things that we have approved?
So I would think in the spirit of that, it would be, and I'll look to the team to chime in, but we have affiliated employee groups with contracts that have all of those provisions already approved by the board.
Okay.
That would be one example of that. Are you thinking of another particular example?
No, I just wanted to make sure that anything that you're signing as a legal document, we've already approved.
When I read that, I assumed that it meant anything, where we have a board policy that we've passed, whether, we may not have specifically approved a particular document, but if it's within the delegation of authority that we've given.
Okay.
To the superintendent or someone else, then we've approved it by virtue of approving the policy.
Okay. Or, for example, tonight, we've got items in the consent agenda, 8.2, 8.3, later on, that the board will take action on, and I would assume that the superintendent would sign those employment contracts as part of the, after the board has taken it, which is part of the second paragraph.
Agreed, and that's what I was talking about, that we were going to take action on, and then after we take action, you can sign. But in order for her to sign, do we have to take action?
But individual teachers don't get employment contracts.
Uh-uh.
That wouldn't. So our past practice has not exactly been the way that you just described that, and again, I'll look to the team to chime in anytime. Our past practice has been, in regard to employment in particular, that I am the sole employee of the board, you're authorizing me to employ all other members of our school district.
Mm-hmm.
And so therefore, those contracts specific to personnel would not come to you.
But we approve them as new employees in our minutes, in our consent agenda.
Right. That, that's sort of a, I'm not framing this in the best way, Brad, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
Our past practice has been that we hire those folks and begin to onboard them and process them, and then your approval is sort of that signature of, yes, this is happening and we're moving forward.
Okay.
And to John's point, we can go back and ensure that that aligns fully with board policy.
That'd be great.
Any other discussion on 7.3? Noting the follow-up, specific to Brad's question, any, all in favor of item 7.3, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.4 for action, Hard Cap for Employees' Medical Benefit Plan, Anna.
Public Act 152 of 2011 gave public employers two options in which to choose how to contribute to employees' medical benefit plans. One option is contributing 80/20, or 80% of the plan cost, and the other is following the state statutorily set hard cap limits. Midland Public Schools has historically used those hard cap limits, and those are integrated into all three of our collective bargaining agreements. We are asking that the board reaffirm our commitment to following the hard cap method for our employees' medical benefit plans for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Anna. I have a motion for 7.4.
I'll move to approve item 7.4. Support.
Motion by McFarland, support by Lotterback. Any discussion or questions on 7.4? All in favor of approving item 7.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.5, Administrative Assistant Authorization, Penny.
It is recommended that the superintendent's designee, the administrative assistant to the Board of Education, who we all know is Sarah and does a lovely job, that she be authorized to assist the secretary of the board in election matters through December 31, 2025.
I have a motion for item 7.5?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Lotterback, support by Ringgold. Any discussion? I'm just going to note quickly for, for the public that in addition to helping us with election matters, Sarah helps us just in staying.
With effort, yes.
Staying together, keeping our sanity and helping us do the job of the board, so thank you, Sarah. You did a great job. All in favor of approving item 7.5, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8 is the consent agenda. Item 8.1, approval of minutes from the December 16, 2024 regular meeting and the December 16, 2024 closed session. Item 8.2, the below staff are recommended for hire as listed. Item 8.3, the below staff announce their resignation effective as the dates listed in your agenda packet. Item 8.4, approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of November 2024 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby in the amount of $11,550,339 is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. Finally, 8.5, approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the following list of professional fees. First, Thrun Law, PC for $2,500, noting the item that we had earlier around the annual retainer fee. And then second, Thrun Law, PC for $422.50 dated December 19, 2024. Noting the discussion we had earlier around the annual retainer fee, I have a motion for the consent agenda, item 8.1 through 8.5.
I move the adoption of the consent agenda, 8.1 through 8.5.
Support.
Motion by Lotterback, support by McFarland. Any discussion on 8.1 through 8.5?
For item 8.5 regarding the retainer fee, are we tabling that until we get a little more clarification on that? Just like, can that just be removed and then we vote on it again next month once we get a more definitive answer?
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
Is there anything that we're going to need in the next month from them that would be affected by the fact that we haven't paid the retainer, or? I don't, I don't have a concern with. I mean, I'm, there, there was a time when this was pretty common, where you paid an annual retainer, and if you were making the commitment to the firm that you were going to give them business throughout the year, they agreed to charge you a lower rate. So I think the reason we get, the rate that we get, which is, I wouldn't say below market, but it's a very reasonable rate, I think is in part because we're essentially saying we're going to pay you an annual retainer and you're our law firm and they know they're going to get future business, so.
I, I would agree with that. The letter that accompanies, that also indicates that with that, we're able to ask a, you know, just some quick offhand questions without being billed, and I'll just share with you all, it seems, just given the nature of our work, that those quick incidental calls have been really helpful to us. So I understand the concern, I will certainly follow up with them, but I feel we get our value out of that $2,500. And we do get a reduced rate, and I don't know that off the top of my head, John, but that is accurate.
No, I would, go ahead, I'd be comfortable voting for it, and if, if we get information that's not consistent with that understanding, we can take it up at a next month's meeting.
Is there an issue to table it, though? I mean, do you think they, I would assume, just with, I also have law firms that are, you know, my other work, work for me, and due to the fact that you've been a client for a very long time, I don't think that they would have doubt that you would, like, we will cover expenses if they do later. I can appreciate what Anne is sharing as well.
Yeah, I'm not certain if this would create a gap in service without going back and looking at the documentation that we received, so I can't speak to that, but if, if you all are not comfortable approving this today, I certainly respect that decision. I don't think the, the outcome of this is going to change for this cycle. This is their standard practice with hundreds of school districts across the state with whom they partner.
And I didn't raise a point in objection to it, I was just kind of.
Absolutely.
Addressing Anne's point of concern.
I guess, I don't, I mean, it's $2,500, I don't have strong feelings, I just think that we, we should inquire. I don't have strong feelings about whether we table it or whether we just come, we circle back to it at a later date.
Let's just move forward.
So are we, are we okay with the motion that's on the table, which is to authorize Penny to spend up to $2,500 on the annual retainer fee, but that's her, her max authorization, and if she can bargain or, or find differently, she has the authority to do so?
I guess, I guess I just want to know from Thrun, we give them a fair amount of business, why we have to have a retainer fee when we pay them an hourly rate? I mean, if it's to answer these one-offs, okay, if it's for something else, great. I think it would just be good to get a little bit of clarity.
Absolutely.
But the motion as a stance is, is okay.
Well, it is part of the consent agenda.
Yeah. So the motion on the table is to approve the consent agenda as written, so I think we should take a vote on the motion as, as on the table. All in favor of approving 8.1 through 8.5 as written in your agenda packet, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item 9, Board of Education, oh, sorry, I even started in my packet.
Thank you.
Completely forgot, missed it. Thank you, Jen. Tonight, Nathan, you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. So first, I just want to thank you and Penny specifically for giving me the opportunity to join Midland Public Schools. As she's probably explained, I have a very diverse background, ranging from kindergarten teacher to superintendent roles. Very excited to be here. Everybody has been very welcoming to me, and Jeff had the opportunity to give me a tour yesterday of the district, and everything has just solidified my desire to be here. So I look forward to making a positive impact while I'm here with you and getting to know each of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And because I have the agenda packet in front of me and the rest of the public may not, Nathan is hired effectively as tonight, as our interim Associate Superintendent of Student Services and Human Resources. Welcome, thank you. Okay. Item number 9, Board of Education Matters and Presentations to the Board. Item 9.1 are shining stars, Penny.
Have these upside down, give me just a minute here. I'm excited tonight to share with you two of our shining stars, and our first is Gavin Reeves. Congratulations. Well, I read some things about you. Gavin joined our Midland Public Schools team in 2024, so fairly recently, as a workstation technician through ITH Help Desk. Gavin became an actual MPS work tech, workstation technician on January 2 of 2025, which is the position he currently holds. He earned a Bachelor of Science degree in information technology from the University of Massachusetts. Gavin was nominated for his shining star by several MPS colleagues, and among their comments are these. Apparently, you're amazing. Gavin is amazing. If you put in a ticket to the help desk, he usually handles that ticket within 24 hours. He explains things, and he is so efficient, it's appreciated by the Woodcrest staff. Well, there's a little tip as to one of the groups that thinks you're awesome. The next group also thinks you're awesome. Gavin is so easy to work with. He takes the time to explain things, and we know that what he says, we can count on. He will check on some things and he will follow through as needed. Gavin is always friendly and professional, and that's true, you always have a smile on your face. He explains things very well, so that's another one for you, that you're explaining things really well, and you take the time to actually answer questions when folks call you. And you're pretty great working with students also and helping them get their needs met. He's very efficient and timely in responding to concerns, this one's from Dow High, concerns of Dow High staff, and he is great to work with and very deserving of the shining star. Congratulations. You're welcome to go to the board and kind of make your rounds. This might be record time, too, as a newer employee, to be nominated by multiple people for a shining star, so I don't know if the little shining star needs like a little star next to it, but that's pretty impressive. Our next shining star is Elizabeth Schuster. I'm not used to the Elizabeth part.
Usually, only my dad calls me.
I was just thinking that, I was reading this, it's Liz in our world. Congratulations.
Thank you.
This. Let's talk about some career highlights for Liz. She joined our MPS team in 2021 as a special education resource room teacher at Dow High School, which is the position she currently holds. Liz earned her Bachelor of Science degrees in biology and psychology from Lyman Briggs, Michigan State, Go Green, and her Master of Arts degree in teaching from Saginaw Valley State University. Liz was nominated for her shining star by MPS colleagues, and among their comments are the following, and I think this one, even though it looks like there's five paragraphs, was whittled down because there was a lot of great things said about you, Liz. Liz is a tireless advocate for her students and colleagues. She ensures students are treated with the utmost respect and are afforded equal access to opportunities and resources. Liz is also very open to. Liz is also very open to collaboration and growth as a teacher. Dow High is lucky to have her. So is Midland Public Schools. Liz is an outstanding educator with a wealth of experience teaching students with special needs. She is dedicated to fostering academic growth and success, ensuring that her students meet the rigorous demands of high school coursework. Her compassionate approach and unwavering commitment to her students has improved their academic performance and enriched their overall educational experience. Liz is always working to create a more positive and inclusive environment at Dow High. Her advocacy has empowered many students to overcome challenges and thrive both academically and socially, and I've seen this myself. Beyond her classroom duties, she also serves as an advisor for the Lunch Bunch Group, which is fun, a program that brings meaningful connection to the school community. The club has become a vital space for fostering friendships, building a sense of belonging, and promoting inclusivity among students at Dow High. Liz has made a profound difference in the lives of students who need this support the most. That's pretty impressive. Congratulations. While Liz is shaking your hand, I'll just offer one little quick additional story. When we had our unfortunate incident with the boiler at Dow High and we needed to bus students over to central auditorium, Liz was one of the, the few staff members that showed up there to make sure that her students made it on the bus, that they were all accounted for. She stayed with our team, making sure that each student had a way to get home that night, digging up phone numbers and calling contacts. And while that wasn't in the shining star report I read to you, definitely meant a lot to us and our team and those students. Have a great night.
I have a lot of great colleagues back there. So if I'm a shining star, that's my constellation right there.
And I did let them know they're welcome to make an exit if they choose to at this point. Thanks for being here.
Congratulations again, Gavin and Liz. Thank you. Item nine point two is spotlight on excellence, Chestnut Hill. Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, can we just say a couple extra gold stars for this team on no school day and they still show up at the board meeting?
Come on up, girls. We invited a few staff and students to join us tonight so we can highlight a, a project that we've been working on for a little over a year at Chestnut Hill. So some fourth and fifth grade students have joined us along with some of our staff. When I got the position at Chestnut Hill in the summer of 2023, as we started getting into our PTO, we realized that we had, we had quite a bit of money that we were sitting on, and we decided that we were gonna come up with a capital project that would be a benefit of the students and something that would be around for a long time. So throughout the fall, we elicited feedback from the staff and had one staff member actually that does not live in Midland recommend because they had seen an outdoor classroom being built at an elementary school, that we kind of look into, to that and see if it was something feasible for us. So it addressed a couple of needs for us. One is getting kids outside and two is a space need that we have in our building. We have a maker space for 18 separate classrooms, so this kind of opened up another spot for group work and things like that. And it shows students that teaching and learning can take place anywhere, so. Girls, any, either, any of you like to come up and share?
Our class used outdoors, outdoor learning space when the weather was nice to get some fresh air while working at the same time. I liked that it was big enough for our whole class to have seats. When we were done with our work, we had the choice to go play on the playground equipment or stay inside the space and read a book. I chose to read the book. I hope that my class gets to use the outdoor space more when the weather is nice because I like being in there.
Sure, okay.
Um, I don't have a paper, but I should try my best to come up with something in my head. Um, I like the outdoor area a lot. It's very fun to go out there. I haven't used it many times because it's been pretty cold at times when we actually go out, but that's all I got.
Yeah, so my first time working, working with contractors in this capacity, so it was quite a learning experience for me. We were able to complete the project around the end of September, which with our fall was, was nice, but still haven't get to see it kind of in its, its full glory yet. So excited to see what that looks like as the spring comes around and weather warms up a little bit, so. Yeah, at this point, any questions about the project or access that we have for kids?
I have a couple of questions. So I have young hitters who went to, oh, Mike.
Sorry, thanks, Phil. I have kids who went to Chestnut Hill and I served on the PTO, and this was something that was talked about a long time ago, so to see it actually like really happen and come to fruition is super cool. So thank you for all of you, and I'm so excited to hear about kids enjoying it. What is the plan for like access and how teachers, like, do you have, are you signing up or are you just leaving it open and first come, first served?
We, we haven't run into like a backlog issue at this point, but yeah, hopefully we'll get to a point where it needs to be kind of signed out and it's such high demand that we get there, but we're still kind of in the beginning stages of that, so. Nothing, nothing in place yet.
How much seating? I mean, obviously, your first speaker said that there was seating for her entire class, but how much seating is there?
So there are five tables. Each table is, well, two of the tables can seat up to eight, the other three can seat six. Three of the tables are accessible, so they're, one of the sides is open, so that if there's any kids in, whether it's standing room and working or if there's a student that needs that access, they can get that. So the hope was to be able to seat up to 30 students at a time in there, so. And it was a project that the PTO, there, there was kind of bookmarked these funds and then through COVID, it kind of rolled over and kept generating more funding, but there, there'd been something bookmarked for an outdoor space for a long time, so we're excited to see it kind of come to fruition.
I see you have teachers with you and you know, we can't, we can't let this pass without hearing from our awesome teachers. Might one of you just share some ideas you have about how this space could be used in the future?
So it can be used as just a traditional learning space where we could teach a lesson out there, and it also could be a space where if we wanted to extend into nature and bring things back, so it's just kind of a place where we can be a little more, move around a little more and you can be a little louder out there instead of like in the maker space and worry about disrupting any other classes that are going on. So just kind, just having that fresh air, I think, like helps students focus more and even just to be out for a little bit and come in even, there's a benefit from that, so. We're excited to have it.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item nine point three, update on our student data from Ken Weaver. Ken?
I was told I had to. I guess it's good even with the new guy, I guess. Well, good evening. Little nervous in the fact that I've done this quite a few times, as you could imagine, over the course of my career, but I guess the first time you do it, you're always just a little bit nervous as well, so bear with me a little tonight. And it's quite the honor to present. I mean, I didn't have much to do with this data. It's all last year's, but at the same time, as the year is progressing, it's becoming mine as well, too, and I'm honored to be able to present it here tonight. It's been quite impressive. I've never, quite honestly, had the opportunity to, to present quite as impressive data as this, so should be very proud as we go through this. To start off with some of the, the real highlights, looking at the, the SAT average scale score. If you've a parent and they've gone off to college and applied for scholarships, this is kind of the money shot of test scores is your SAT, so to speak. And it's really quite impressive. We're in the top 3.5% in ELA of schools in Michigan and the top 3% in math. So we actually went up a little bit. And by the way, I should thank Brian. This is a playoff of his presentation from last year, so if it doesn't go well, just keep that in mind. But getting back to the presentation, so very impressive with the SAT and where we rank. And now, by the way, if you have any questions and you wanna stop me, just feel free, okay? And as we have a, what we do here in Midland, as I looked at the presentation, is compared to an elite comparison group. This isn't like to bring anybody down in any way, shape, or form, or to put ourselves above anybody. It's really trying to look at the best in the state and really, you know, going beyond comparing to the, the state scores or local schools in Midland County. It's really about comparing to a really high performing group of schools, and you can see them listed here. Some that we have some characteristics somewhat in common with and some others, and we'll look at that next. As you can see here, this is the spending per pupil. Midland spends a little bit more than the average school, but at the same time, the average of the elite comparison group, as you can see here, we're still below a little bit, about $1,000, as you can see. So there's quite a bit of, that speaks to the value you get for your tax dollars with state scores. A lot of places I've seen websites have that comparison where you can look at per dollar spent and what your test scores bring, and I think this would rank very high for, for Midland as well, too. And then you can also look at economically disadvantaged, number of economically disadvantaged students. Sometimes economically disadvantaged students sometimes bring some tougher challenges that come along with them. And this is important to note, you can see Midland's has steadily climbed over the last 20 years to where you've got quite a gap in the data here as presented, and between us and the elite comparison group. We're still below the state average, but as you can see, that's climbing, and that it's also causing our teachers then to address different concerns that they may have in the classroom, and they're doing a very good job of doing that, as you will see. Moving on and looking at, oops, there we go, the percentage of students with disabilities. Midland is about 16%, just a little bit. We presented this at the CIA meeting today as well, too, looking at some of that data as well. We're a little bit above, as you can see, we've been narrowing that gap with the state average, but we're still quite a bit below four or five percentage points below the elite comparison group. So we do have some things in common, and so the elite comparison group is an excellent group to look at. Here you can see our SAT scale scores and where they, kind of with all those schools that we had mentioned in the elite comparison group laid out, you can see where we are in ELA. While you could see us, like, I think it's seven out of nine or whatever like that, but if you're looking at that, the actual scaled score difference is not far from moving up quite rapidly in the, in this listing. And the point isn't so much where you rank against the other schools, it's that you're in this group and you're solidly in this group is really the most important thing. As you can also see where we're at with math, science, and social studies, which is quite impressive. So very impressive feat for Midland with the scale scores. One of the things I wanted to bring up, too, is it's not only the scale score, which is the average of all your kids in taking the, the scaled scores, also the proficiency, the number of kids that met the proficiency mark. And our rankings, as far as that goes with the SAT, are quite impressive, anywhere from the top 1% or so of, of schools in Michigan to the top 7% as well. And that's the number of kids that are proficient on the test. So it's not just that we got a really high group of performing kids that are pulling, pulling that scaled score up. All of the kids are doing pretty, quite well. Then we're looking at proficiency as we go through. Sorry, it's kind of hard to see this from these angles. Wish I should have ran through it a little bit. As you look, you could see in here the proficiency in the different M step and this PSAT and the SAT scores. As you can see, we're holding pretty firm on our, our proficiencies of where we were in the past, and this is us compared to the state and how far that we, the difference between us. And you can see it kind of as you stay in Midland schools, you can see that percentage of kids that are proficient starts to go up as you, as you go along. One of the things that you want to look at, too, is that third grade. Third grade proficiency is extremely important here in the state of Michigan and that, and I believe that went up about three percentage points over last year, so you're starting to see that, especially when you're implementing and really working hard on your literacy curriculum. A lot of times you see a, an implementation dip a little bit, and then you can see that hopefully that we're starting to come out of that and you're starting to see the scores rise a little bit as well, too. Here's our ELA proficiency scores compared to as well, the elite comparison group as well as the state. The red bar that you can see there is the state average, whereas the gray is the elite comparison group and the blue is, is us. And you can see where our percentage of proficient rank as we go through the different grade levels. And then we start to look at math as well, too, and the proficiency scores as well, and you start to see the same trend basically go. We get a little bit of a dip in the fifth grade, but then you start to see as it goes along, it starts to raise a little bit. One of the interesting things this year, or last year, I should say, with the PSAT and the SAT, that I don't know if it gets enough play, is that it went digital. It was online. And on the online, especially in the math, you had a Desmos calendar or calculator, and I think a lot of times that's gonna take a little bit of time to get used to. Not an excuse, but I think as far as things go, and I think you saw this dip across, you can see the state dipped as well, too. I think there's gonna be a little bit of getting used to that online format, plus as well, the, the test is computer adaptive, and I think it also takes quite a bit of time for teachers to adapt to that test and to be able to make adjustments as well, too. It doesn't act the same way as the paper and pencil, obviously. Not just because it's digital, but the, the questions vary on how you start off the test. If you start off a little bit rough in the first one or two questions, you start to get easier questions quite a way, and then sometimes you hit a ceiling that you can, you can't go over and you might've just had a rough start. So there's a little bit of adjustment and learning curve that I think will happen over time with the whole state, as well as our teachers in Midland here. And here you see us compared to the elite comparison group, and really look at that 11th grade, as you can see, that gap is really quite narrowed in proficiency as we go along. Here's science, and now this is back to the M step, and you can see in grades five, eight, and 11, we compare against the state. Gray is the state on the left, and obviously, we're in the blue on the right. And then here's social studies. Social studies is quite impressive, because that's really, you're taking your ELA skills, you're taking some math skills as, as you're looking at different graphs and stuff like that, and you're putting it all together into that social studies test. So that's very impressive, looking at that, both your science and your social studies, they make use of those skills that you acquire in the, in the core areas, the other two core areas. And here you go with the social studies. And here we are compared to the elite comparison group. So it's very impressive to see how we put together those skills and start to really and, and performing on the different, on the state tests. And this is once again, the M step. And then here, you can see over time, a composite comparison of the SAT and how we are closing that gap. You can see as we're starting to trend up, the elite comparison group trending down a little bit over time. A lot of that, I'm sure, is, is adjusting back to COVID and other factors as well, too. But you start to see Midland Public Schools narrowing that gap over the last two, three years, which is quite impressive as we go along, and you can even see the state is dipping down a little bit. So you can see that it's a lot of that is some of the efforts that I think Midland has put in, and we'll talk about that in just a second. Wanted to talk quickly about growth. Once again, by the way, this is like a high level view of the, the data, and we've gone much more in-depth look through the CIA Subcommittee of the Board as well, and so they've seen a lot more comprehensive, as well as the admin have seen a lot more, and they've seen their building scores as well, too. This is not the, you know, this is just to give you a flavor of where we're at, and if you have any questions and, and want to further look at stuff, we can certainly come back. Looking at 76% of MPS students with, had average to high growth in ELA, and then 74% had the same in math, which is quite impressive. So 76 to 74% and of your students are experiencing average to high growth, which that means they're, for the most part, they're ent-. which that means they're for the most part, they're on track and moving forward and experiencing a year's growth in that time. You can also see us here with the percent of MPS ELA students in grades three through eight and 11, with an average or high growth outpaces the state and consistently remains competitive with the ECG group as well, too. Where the green line, where the blue is the elite comparison group. And the same in math, we mirror the trends that you see. Math, I think during COVID probably was the hardest hit for obvious reasons and how technical it is and everything else. And a lot of times you can't really push yourself with math at home, especially in the higher, more complex areas. And I think that really took a seat, took a step back. But you see us starting to gain and starting to come back as well, too. Some of the things that wanted to highlight is that the district has been doing that. It's been very impressive. This has been quite a year of learning everything that Midland has going on and has been implementing over the last few years. Obviously, our elementary literary focus, we're really focusing hard on essentials, skills, what they now call the, the science of reading, trying to really emphasize those. Working hard as we implement the curriculum, but also working on those decoding skills and working on those phonemic awareness skills as well, too. Vocabulary skills and really trying to build up those early reading skills as they learn how to read and then start to make that shift to reading to learn. We have summer school program that was quite impressive. We invested pretty close to a million dollars and in quite a bit of effort with all the schools providing that. We intend to do the same this year as well, too. Tier two and three tutoring interventions, math seminars, secondary learning coaches, elementary literacy coaches. You can see the list, I won't read them all. But then we're also adding this year, really having that increased focus on multi-tier system of student supports, which is really your interventions. And it's much more depth and technical than that. It's not just putting an intervention in place as well as really looking at the MyKit process, which is your continuous improvement process and that team approach at the district level. And really pushing and helping the buildings and supporting them in that process as well, too. So really proud of our efforts in this area. Last year, you had a couple of areas that were identified for focus. One of those was in the area of grade three ELA proficiency. Here you can talk, I talked earlier about the 3%, you can see that growth. One of the things is important to note as you look at this, this is proficiency in ELA. And that's an important thing to look at, obviously, overall. But it encompasses many skills, reading, writing, speaking and listening. And you can see as well, too, and it will remain an area of focus as we move forward from here as well. And then as well, too, we looked at some concerns that we had last year that were identified in grades five, six, 10 and 11 in math proficiency. We tended to have, as you can see, we highlighted a few things here. We still have some areas of which to grow on, on that we're still working on. Like I had mentioned earlier, the year one SAT online. I think that was one of the concerns that probably affected the math scores. And one of the things that we've got to work on as a staff as well, too, is adapting to that test. But you also look at the fact that the state was down, the ECGs were down. And we still, we continue to do well as, and, but we still have a lot of things to work on. And the different principals at the secondary buildings are working hard on those areas. These are the two slides that I'm probably most proud of with Midland, looking at this. This is our economically disadvantaged students. I asked Mary, who does our data assessment and puts all of this together for us, if she could look at our economically disadvantaged students and how we did to similar schools. Similar schools are those schools that you have a lot of characteristics in common, more so than your ECG. You are very close in economically disadvantaged, you're very close in how much you spend, staffing and everything else. And this is a great way to look at and see how we're addressing some of our subgroups. The biggest subgroup we have is economically disadvantaged. And you could look and see our proficiency overall. We still have a lot of growth to go. But this is all, all grades, all subjects combined proficiency. And it really shows that as compared to similar schools, we are moving our kids, our economically disadvantaged kids along. And that we still though, while we still have areas for growth, we are doing a pretty good job of, of moving these students and addressing a lot of their needs, not all of them, though. Same thing with students with disabilities. And we saw some of this today at the CIA Subcommittee as well, too. This is all grades, all subjects for them as well, too. And we still, while we still have a lot of work to do in moving these along, because you always want to set that bar of where the, the gen ed kids are at, and it's important for that. But you can still see as compared to similar schools, we have the same, similar challenges that we have with these groups of students and that. And we're still moving them along quite well and as you can see by the graph here. This is the last slide. And this is just a little pat on the back as well, too. And you can see some of this here, some of the stats, 73% of our kids taking the AP test scored three or higher, which three generally is college credit. You can see we had 41 students earning the syllable literacy, 19 full diploma kids. It's very impressive. You can see the, the other scores as well, too, and our index scores. This is an amazing district, amazing to work in, amazing things happen every day, both by the students, the community and the staff. It's just, it's amazing place to be. And every day it's, it's just come in here and find something else to be proud of. So fantastic. Any questions? And I don't know if I met my 15 minutes, was I close? Close enough?
Thanks, Ken. I have to admit, as a data person, this is like my favorite presentation of the year.
Well, hopefully I didn't botch it for you.
No, no, and I still have my, my 2023 presentation in my.
I actually do.
In my binder, but you know, I, I want to start by asking you to just explain to us, what do we mean by proficiency when we talk about proficiency in this presentation? Does it mean that there's a cutoff at proficiency and that kids can or can't read? Or is it more of a bell curve?
It's, it's honestly, it's more of a bell curve and the fact that, especially with the M step. So when the M step was setting cut scores many years ago, they used the, what a freshman who got a C in college as their starting point and worked back what they would have scored. And I don't know how they did it, but they did it through data and they got in the ballpark of where that cut score would be. And so that's how they set the cut score. So when you look at the cut score and it says, let's say we had 51% in ELA, that doesn't mean that 51% of kids can read and the other 49% can't. What it means is just like when you look at anything, it's on a continuum. And it means some can do better. And at 51% has set that bar, that mark, hit that mark that the state has set as being proficient. That doesn't mean the rest can't read. And then the state has come through then and said another scaled score that then gets a student identified for what we call an IRIP, which is an individual reading plan. Now, these are the kids that really struggle with reading and they're the ones that get quite a bit of intense. As well as then in between that, from hitting that proficiency mark to where those kids on the IRIP, we have a long list of interventions that many kids do, both tier one, which is in the classroom, as well as tier two and tier three. Did I explain that well? I mean, it's really on a continuum. It's not a, hey, you hit the mark or you don't.
Thank you. So we will get, we're, we will get an email that says, and let me use your social studies statistic as an example, where you showed the, that, that MPS was at 71 and the, the peer group was below that. We're going to get an email tomorrow that says 71% is a, is a C. Tell me why we're proud that our kids are getting a C. How do we respond to that?
These percentages and do not equate to letter grades in any shape or form. There's not a, how to say, there's, there's, there's no equivocation at all between the two. And so you got to keep that in mind. And what you really want to look at, first of all, you know, I know we compare ourselves and it's great to look at ourselves to the elite comparison group. The biggest thing, and I always did this in previous districts and previous places, is you want to compare yourself to yourself first and foremost. And are we getting better and are we improving in our kids' learning? And I think the answer overwhelmingly is yes. But then what you want to look at as well, too, is like where are you at in comparison to the rest of the group? Both similar schools, schools in your area, elite comparison groups, and really get an idea of where you're at. But in no way, shape or form does the percentage of, of students proficient equal to a letter grade at all.
Does anybody get a 90?
Um, I'm sure somewhere, probably.
Going back to your.
And the question is going to be, why don't our kids get a, why don't we get a 90?
I mean, that, that's the question that the public's going to ask us. And I, I think I know what you're saying, that what we've set is an unattainable goal. So if we're at 71% and we look at comparison, we're doing really well.
Yes.
But.
But our goal is always 100%.
Doesn't translate well out into the community. How do we communicate with the community that at 71%, that doesn't sound great, but we're doing really well?
Yeah, well, one of the things that I would say, first of all, is kids are not, I mean, you all have kids. They're not test scores. I have four kids. They're not a test score. And I don't know what they scored. And I was their data person for a number of years. They're much more than that. And really a measure of a school district is the community, it's the culture in the school, it's the clubs, it's the opportunities, what's what kids do after school. That's really how, and it's hard to measure. And so everybody likes to boil down to a, to a test score because it's easy. It's, it's what you can look at. It's why everybody wants to give a letter grade and everything else. But really a measure of a school district is the heart that it has, how it cares for the least of us and how it cares for the most of us. And that's what you really want to look at when you're looking at your school district and how it meets the needs of all its kids. It's really those growth indicators and trying to really understand that and how you're growing all the kids and that you're looking at all the different groups of kids and that they're all important and that you're, you're working and doing your best every day to do that. And you have a staff. I mean, I know I've only been in the district six, seven months, I forget what exactly it is. But it's impressive to see the professionalism that they exhibit every day, the principals, the teachers, the paras. It's just amazing to see. And that's really how you measure a district is by, really by its heart. But in the end, you still have to have test scores. You still have, especially when you got a kid taking the SAT. And that's where you gotta, you've got to look at and how your individual child does. For, for my family, my first three kids, they had a different measure than what my fourth one. But they're all successful and I'm happy with all of their educations that they received. And it's all different. Kids are unique. And if you have more than one child, you know that and they're all different. And what you really want to look at is how they perform in relation to what skills, what talents, what interests they have. And especially as kids get older and they become more independent. I was an assistant principal at a high school for a long time. And you could see when that light went on and they found what interested them, that's when things really sparked. And that's what a school district has to do, is has to be able to offer those opportunities. And we do that with all the CTE and all the course offerings that we have and all the clubs and everything else that we have, that you almost don't have an excuse to find your place here.
Can I ask another question? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I appreciate the presentation and I understand because I've heard it before. I understand what you're saying. But that person that sends us the email tomorrow is going to say, let's say there's a district somewhere in the state of Michigan that got a 90 and we got a 71. What are they doing that we're not? And should we be doing what they're doing? And that's not a question you can necessarily answer tonight.
Well, we can and we try and we share a lot. Districts, one of the things educators are is very collaborative and we share a lot. And if there was a magic cure for everything, we would all have the same curriculum. We would all have the same resources. We would all have exactly the same curriculum and, and materials and everything, but there isn't. And so there's many ways of looking at that and, and doing that. But we do try to, to learn from others. We're constantly learning from others. We're constantly bringing in experts. We're constantly learning from ISDs and, and conferences we go to. So we're constantly doing that as well, too. So in answer to your question and, and trying to, how to say, get away from, I don't want to say get away, but really answer that, that you're 71, you've got a C and should we be doing what others are doing? I mean, there's, there's also one undeniable truth. Test scores, standardized test scores follow social demographics and SES. Plain and simple, it's a one-to-one relationship. So many times you have to look at those things and that's why you compare yourself to similar schools. When you get down to it, the dirty secret is, is that there is a one-to-one ratio. And so when you look at Midland and you look at the percentage of economically disadvantages, it really is a success story.
I'll just offer two, and I know you have a question, to Ken's point that we look to learn from others. Others are looking to learn from us. We get calls regularly from other school districts wanting to know what it is we're doing to get the outcomes we get and if they can learn from us. I, I also think, and this isn't to diminish your question, John, but this is one assessment. I understand it is, you know, the critical assessment by which we're measured in the public, but it is not the fullness, to Ken's point, of what a student knows and is able to do. We have many students who, not many, we have some students who are not great at taking assessments. And so this assessment might not measure the depth of their knowledge or breadth of their knowledge and skill. And again, it's a point in time. A lot can happen on that M step day. And I, I think the one thing we can do as a district, and I look forward when we have some strategic planning conversations, is talking about how we want to define success here in our district for us holistically as well as for our students. And you had a question?
So I have one comment and one question. Ken, I think one thing that you left out that every school district needs to do is to work on teaching their kids how to think and how to find the resources they need to solve problems. And I think if we take the social studies scores as an indication of whether we are teaching kids to think, we're doing pretty darn well, right? You go to work every day, you don't have all the answers. If you know how to think through a problem and find the resources to answer that problem, you're 10 steps ahead of the kid who just knew the answer right there and didn't look any further. Okay, my question, so in eighth grade math, if I remember correctly, we saw a bit of a dip. Do we get like data that can show us where our kids were struggling in math?
No, because it went to, no, because the PSAT went too digital and, and being computer adaptive, like you don't get the item analysis that you used to. You get a, a general sense of what, when, maybe not as well as what you'd like, but you don't get like you, you used to or what you could sometimes give them analysis. So one of the things that we have teachers doing, especially at, at the middle, at the middle schools in eighth grade, is looking at the test. I know that they had a couple of groups over here looking at, going through the data. You know, and I, like I said, I think a lot of it is growing pains with the digital form of the math assessment. And I know that they are looking at and trying to address that and were, you know, pretty upset themselves with, with the dip that they experienced in eighth grade.
I just can't help myself to that point, too. You know, we have worked really hard in our organization to not overreact to a single year dataset. The trend data tells us a story. And we also look at cohort data. So we follow, and this is all of the analysis that Ken talks about happening. Our study committee looked at this, our principals and teacher teams are looking at this. We, we look at cohort data to see what that group of students, how they're performing over time. And then the grade to grade, year to year comparison also tells us a story. So there are just lots of ways to disaggregate this data, to group and regroup student populations in different ways that we can more clearly understand what the student experience is, how they're enacting, how they're interacting with the curriculum that we're offering and trying to analyze what we can do to be better. Jen?
Yeah, I was going to say, one of the slides that was really impactful to me going back, was going back to the scale scores for SAT. And if we're in the top 3% of the state as Midland Public Schools, comparing ourselves to those 13 elite comparison groups, not a single one of those school districts was in the level four performance, right? Like, so like as far as proficiency. So the idea of what does it look like to be level four expectation of perfection, it just doesn't even exist. I mean, we're, we were seven out of nine, I mean, or like second place or whatever in place. And listen to me using those terms of perfection, right? To try and even explain it is something that you can't even explain. So like the idea of what does it look like to be quote unquote, perfect, just doesn't even exist.
Yeah, you, you might see it occasionally with a, an elite school that is a, a magnet school that you've got to have certain scores to get in and so forth, but that's about it.
Ken, can you go back to the ELA graph? I think it was.
Stop me when I get there. This one?
Keep going. The bar graph.
Oh, the bar graph. This?
Yes, this one.
This one or the next?
Nope, the stag bar, right here. So one of the things that you said earlier was, you know, the measure of a school district can be, how do you measure success for the least amongst us? And one of the things that really sticks with me is when we do this elite comparison group comparison is how many students with, that are economically disadvantaged, and even more so, how many students we, we educate successfully that have disabilities. And that is a point of pride that I have for our district and our educators and something that we do extremely well. And I remember when, when we hired Penny as our superintendent, I asked her if, I hope I can share this. But I asked her, what do you want your legacy to be? And her answer was, we are a progressive growth district, meaning that we close the gap as we go from third grade to 11th grade. And I want my third grade reading scores to go up. And if I can close that gap by the end of my tenure, I will consider myself, I will consider that a successful legacy. And when I look at this and, and look at kind of everything all encompassing of the data that's presented to us specifically with our ability to grow a student once they're in the district, our scale scores for SAT being extremely successful and doing extremely well with students that have disabilities or economically disadvantaged, I can't help but think about our facilities. And the one thing that has been consistent over the last two years that we've talked about in our facilities is space to do pre-K. And when I think about closing the third grade reading scores, is there anything that we can do that is more successful than making sure our students have high-quality access, access to high-quality preschool?
That is like, all the research shows that a lot of the, the student's trajectory is determined by how they start off, and preschool is a big part of that. So having access to that and having it in the buildings would allow that connection to the kindergarten curriculum and really pushing that along and those literacy curriculum connections that you can make and sharing expertise that you can share back and forth. No, there really isn't much other than making, and making sure, I mean, parents are the child's first teacher. They are the most critical element of getting a child to early, in those skills, their early reading skills. You know, reading to them often and then transitioning to having them read and modeling all of that. That is such an important part of it. So between the two of them, it's the parents in that, that early part, and then the schools with the preschool, and then taking off in the kindergarten and building on those. They're all extremely important.
So I think, you know, John asked the question earlier, like, how do we get us, get ourselves even catapulted higher? Part of that is making sure that we have the facilities to do so.
Yes.
Right? And, and I, I think when we have access to high-quality preschool at three and fours, we can change that third grade reading score and make sure that by seventh, eighth, 11th grade on this chart, that our students are above the elite comparison group.
I agree. It's gonna be important. And I think it's an important effort to move forward and to move Midland into, into the next realm with the scores. As you can see, that probably third grade is, is probably the, the area that we most have to work on. And we're working on it currently. And I think part of the moving forward with the proposals that you have is a big part of that as well, too.
And in addition to that, the other indicator is class size. And that's a huge piece of our facilities improvement plan is making sure that we have the space to have reduced class sizes. So between pre-K and reduced class sizes in elementary, it's huge.
Yeah.
So I have maybe one final question for you, Ken, and myself. So we just saw a bunch of data in aggregate. And we saw proficiency and growth. But then each of us as parents also get an NWA assessment for our individual students a couple of times, two or three times a year?
Three times a year.
And it, three times a year, and it has proficiency and growth metrics specifically for our own student, students on, on that printout. What is your expectation of us as parents that we do with that?
Well, that's a great question. You know, it's hard when you get something like that and you're not really familiar. And a lot of times it can be overwhelming as well, too. I would say one of the things is definitely to meet and talk with your teacher. That is one of the things that as you go through and ask them to help explain that and where there's things that they can work on. And a lot of times with those reports, you get areas of, of growth or areas of need that the student can work on. And then you can find, and a lot of times now with the internet, I mean, there's no escaping it. There's a lot of resources out there as well, too. But as a parent, like, I always go to, back to the point that I made earlier. You know, you're, you're child's first teacher. And it's so important for that, that parent to be there, to see how important an education is, to model that, and to also as well, with whatever skills they have and whatever resources. And it could be just going to, and we have such a great opportunity in this community for the arts, for the, they bring in the science exhibits, we're going to that, the infinite. I mean, just so many different things in which you can spark that curiosity. Because at some point, it's really becomes intrinsic as to what that child wants out of their life and, and pursuing that education. You can't force somebody to be educated. And that part is part of the, the spark that Midland supplies, but also the parents supply that as well, too. Parents are so important, that partnership. And it's being involved, being involved in the school, helping to support PTO efforts and so forth, helping support the teachers as well, and making sure that, that connection and that communication continues and is strong.
Thank you.
Sure, sir. You showed our trend of disadvantaged students over the last 20 years. Can you put that graph up there?
Sure.
Us versus, yes, us, well, is that, the one previous to that?
This is disabilities.
Disabilities, okay, next one, yep.
This one, the economically?
Yes.
Okay.
I love comparing ourselves against the elite comparison group. We've always done that. That is the bar we want to set for ourselves, to challenge ourselves. That same statistical percentage, if we were to compare ourselves to our exact identical peers, I bet we are the number one school district in the state of Michigan.
Yeah, we challenge Mary. She's been up to a lot. It'd be interesting to compare, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And to that point, do we know, do we have a sense of how they're selecting this elite comparison group? Is it just based on scores or is there more to that?
The elite comparison group, if I'm not mistaken, and Brian can maybe answer this, is that that was selected at one point by Midland. Now, the similar schools, it runs through an algorithm and it spits out, I forget how many schools it is, 10 to 15, maybe a little bit more of comparison schools. So there's similar schools, and then there's the elite comparison group, which is something I believe Midland did, and correct me if I'm wrong.
This hearkens back, I think it was a Bob Cooper, a name you haven't met, Bob Cooper, a former associate superintendent. And he was our, our math coordinator and our data go-to for a long time. And we were just trying to think of ways to tell our story that, that the public could maybe better understand. And so we picked these aspirational schools, schools who, you know, as you can see by the data, are a little different from us in terms of some of their student demographics, but schools that we know we aspire to be. And when we started to look into how, how they're performing academically, we realized that we hang with this group. And so we wanted to keep challenging ourselves to close that gap we have between us and those elite comparison schools. So there is really no magical formula we used to choose them. And, you know, Anne leaned over during one of the conversations and said, hey, I, I thought Rockford was part of our group. There are other schools that we often talk about in this elite comparison group as well. Brian, what would you add?
No, you hit the nail on the head with that one. Non-magnet public school districts that routinely ranked in the top 5% at that time. And they had to have maintained that ranking for a period of about 10 years, not one-off flukes. And we put those on paper and it's kind of lived ever since then. And we wanted to maintain a grouping that we always wanted to compare ourselves to that wasn't the state. I remember giving data presentations in the past, and we say, the state, the state's the state. And that's just not the benchmark that we're holding ourselves to. We're holding ourselves against the best of the best. And when we look at the data, these were the best of the best, but don't look like us in terms of funding, in terms of students with challenges, both economically and also with disabilities as well, too.
I'll also add, these are, for the most part, really vibrant communities that understand the value of education. And education is central to the success of their economic development or of their economic health and their overall vibrancy as a community. And so it's just another way that we looked at that bigger picture, too, when we picked those aspirational schools.
Just to be clear, we've checked recently to make sure that these are still the top schools, though.
Yeah, they are, they are still schools that we would benchmark ourselves against. And to Ken's point earlier, I know we're getting way into the weeds. The highest achieving schools in our state are typically magnet schools where there are particular criteria you need to be part of those. And I don't think that's a fair comparison for us. So, yeah, and we can go back again and revisit this. But these, for the most part, are the schools that we would continue comparing ourselves to. And I just want to reaffirm, you heard me say this three years ago, four years ago, five years ago, when I was doing the data presentations and Ken said it tonight, it made me very happy. We're really competing against ourselves, the last best version of Midland Public Schools. And so I just want us to keep that in mind, too. This is one way to look at this data. We want to be better than we were last year, and next year we want to be better than we are this year.
Any other questions? The only thing I would last leave you with is, since my time in the district, what I've been most impressed with, with the staff is just a never-ending to be better. I mean, you do have very impressive scores. And to see the effort that the principals, district administration, staff, paras, and everybody makes just to be better, it's really, really amazing and, and just, it's an unbelievable place to be and to see that effort, that no one is resting on their laurels. It's just, it's, it's really fun, fun to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Item 9.4 for action, athletic eligibility appeal for student A. Jeff?
Thanks, Bill. An athletic eligibility hearing was held on January 9th, 2025 for student A. Participants were a board subcommittee of three board members, Superintendent Miller Nelson, Associate Superintendent Jaster, and Athletic Director John Streeter. It's the recommendation of the board subcommittee that student A be approved for athletic, athletic eligibility at HH Dow High School per exception nine of section nine from the 2024-2025 MHSAA handbook.
Thanks, Jeff. Do I have a motion for item 9.4?
I'll move to approve item 9.4.
Support.
Motion by McFarland, support by Horowitz. Any discussion?
Without getting into the weeds, is there a real simple answer of what exception nine of section nine of the 2024-2025 MHSAA handbook would read?
I think you could summarize it by saying it's a student well-being slash safety-related concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of approving item 9.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.5 for action, cardiac emergency response plans. Jeff?
Thank you. Just a little history here and, and some of the legal motivation behind this. So in April of '24, the governor of Michigan signed House Bills 5527 and 5528 into law. The bills require comprehensive cardiac emergency response plans in state public schools. The bills outline requirements for regular review and annual update of these plans. And it states that by the '25-'26 school year, all Michigan schools must adopt cardiac emergency response plans and have them in place. These plans, there's language specific to what these plans must include. And to sort of summarize that, it must include staff members who are trained and designated as responders, who are also required to maintain first aid CPR, AED certification. As mandated by law, these plans must be formally approved during a public board meeting to main, excuse me, maintain transparency and compliance. And then this process ensures that our districts remain prepared to respond to effect cardiac emergency and demonstrates our commitment to the safety and well-being of students, staff, and visitors. MPS first created and implemented CERP plans in December of 2019. And at that time, it's when the state first required emergency operation plans. So we had approved those as well. And then we have participated in annual review since then. And so today, MPS administration has completed annual review of these plans for the '24-'25 school year. And it's for action here tonight.
Thanks, Jeff. I get a motion for item 9.5?
Is that moved?
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Ringold. Any question or discussion? Emergency response plans? All in favor of approving item 9.5, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 9.6 for action, approval of drinking water management plan. Anna?
Hi, yes. Good evening. Tonight, we are presenting the district's drinking water management plan to you for your approval. A little bit of background on why this was developed for you. The Clean Drinking Water Access Act of 2023 was put into effect and aims to protect Michigan children from exposure to lead in drinking water. With this, it requires schools and childcare centers to develop this drinking water management plan, install lead-reducing filters on all water fountains that they could drink from, and test the filtered water. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy provided a drinking water management plan template that schools and childcare centers could utilize. And Midland Public Schools has decided to utilize this template to be in compliance with the act. Looking over what's required within this plan, it needs to include the location of every place that children could drink water out of, including filtered bottled filling stations as well as filtered faucets. There also needs to be a map within there of water outlets for purposes other than described of drinking, such as hand-washing sinks, as well as locations where water outlets will be shut off or rendered permanently inoperable for areas that do not meet the requirements of this plan. The most common thing that we are seeing in this are the bubblers in classrooms, mainly at the elementary level. In addition to the location of all of these water fixtures available, there also needs to be a schedule for when annual water sampling and testing will be occurring, as well as a schedule to be filled out to indicate the regular replacement of filter cartridges for each of the filtered bottled filling stations. To remain in compliance with this, we have our drinking water management plan. And we have to certify each year annually on August 15th that we remain in compliance with this. We would request that you approve the district's drinking water management plan tonight as submitted. It is a very massive document at 308 pages. A huge thanks to Mike Mogenberg, who managed to go through every single school building and look at every place that water was coming in.
Thank you, Anna. Can I get a motion for item 9.6?
Move to approve the drinking water management plan. Support.
Motion by Ringold, support by Horowitz. Any further discussion, questions? Big thanks to Mike for going through every building. All in favor of? All in favor of approving item 9.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved. Item number 9.7 are, is for action, the bond election authorization, authorizing resolution to call for election. Do I need to think the, now there for?
I'm, I move that we pass a resolution as follows, that a special election of the school electors of the district shall be called and held on Tuesday, May 6, 2025. The proposition to be voted on at the special election shall be stated on the ballots in substantially the form set forth in exhibit A to the resolution. The election coordinator is requested to utilize the Midland Daily News, newspaper published, newspaper published or of general circulation within the district, for publication of notices in accordance with the election law requirements. Utilize ballot proposition summary information as prepared by legal counsel in the forms of the notices of last day of registration and election in substantially the form as set forth in exhibit B attached to the resolution. Provide a proof copy of the ballot to the district and its legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. This board estimates the period of usefulness of the improvements for which the bonds of the district, in the amount of $285 million, are to be issued to be not less than 30 years. Secretary of the Board is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator and with any election clerk or clerks designated to conduct elections within the district by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. All resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, are hereby rescinded.
Motion by Lauterbach?
Support.
Support by McFarland? Open the floor for discussion on resolution for call for election.
I guess my only, yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I guess my inclination would be to actually read exhibits A and B so that it's transparent about what we're voting on. Exhibit A to the resolution says, shall Midland Public Schools, Midland County, Michigan, borrow the sum of not to exceed $285 million and issue its general obligation unlimited tax bonds therefore, in one or more series for the purpose of erecting, furnishing, and equipping new school buildings and school support buildings, erecting additions to remodeling, including security improvements to furnishing and refurnishing and equipping and re-equipping school buildings, acquiring and installing instructional technology and instructional, excuse me, instructional technology, equipment for school buildings, purchasing school buses, and acquiring, preparing, developing, equipping, and improving playgrounds, playfields, athletic fields, and facilities, driveways, parking areas, and sites. The following is for informational purposes only. The estimated millage that will be levied for the proposed bonds in 2025 is 3.9 mils or $3.90 on each $1,000 of taxable valuation. The maximum number of years the bonds of any series may be outstanding, exclusive of any refunding, is 25 years. The estimated simple average annual millage anticipated to be required to retire this bond debt is 3.81 mils or $3.81 on each $1,000 of taxable valuation. The district does not expect to borrow from the state to pay debt service on the bonds. The total amount of qualified bonds currently outstanding is $64,700,000. The total amount of qualified loans currently outstanding is zero. The estimated computed millage rate may change based on changes in certain circumstances. Exhibit B is simply a summary of the ballot proposition, which would be inserted in the publication in the newspaper summarizing the exhibit A that I just read. That is my motion.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion on ballot language and motion item 9.7? I do want to make just one comment for clarification. Again, we've talked about this before, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Again, the estimated millage we levied for the proposed bond in 2025 is 3.9 mils, and averaged out over the life of the bond is estimated to be 3.81. This is consistent with what we talked about before. And because we still have $64,700,000 outstanding, that bond, the millage rate ramps down over time, so we will still show the 3.9 mils as a total. But because of the ramp down in the first bond, it will be a 3.25 increase to the taxpayer. Any further discussion or questions on language? This item requires a roll call vote. Jen?
President Roush.
Yes.
Vice President McFarland.
Yes.
Treasurer Lauterbach.
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Member Blazy?
Yes.
Member Craig?
Yes.
Member Horowitz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 9.8, facility improvement bond proposal update. For information, just consistent with our past meetings, update on where we're at in the process, obviously, tonight we took action to call for election. In addition, this now will start a much more intensive informational campaign. Last meeting, I don't believe he's here tonight, but one of the members of the public, Mr. Domino, had asked about really our analysis on, could you reinvest in Northeast, or was it more economical to replace it? We've worked with our architects and engineers to really detail that out, and we'll put it on our website for, for him, to be responsive to him and other community members that have asked that question. And then we will also launch a, in addition to what we've already put on the internet, a much more kind of formalized information website with more intensive FAQs, I guess. But I want to make sure that the public knows any of us are available at any time to answer questions, as well as Penny and her staff. So please don't shy away from asking the questions that you have. As we talked about tonight, earlier in our data presentation, student outcomes are the most important part of what we do as a district. But those outcomes in both proficiency and growth can only happen when the environment in which their learning meets the needs of the students and the changing learning that has to happen in our building. So, but appreciate your support, but understand that public deserves and needs more information. So please reach out to us at any point in time, and then check in on our website for more and more comprehensive information about the facility improvement plan and what we're marching forward with, hopeful public approval in May. Item number 10, ours, is our public request to address the board. Did have Mr. Bonner, do you sign up ahead of time? Welcome.
I can just take a big X across my first paragraph. I am now very confused as to what the millage, the total millage is going to be on my property taxes between the old one and the new one. I was going with 3.25, it's now 3.9. And in the December meeting, there was a comment that the bond, that the bonds FAQs was going to be updated with something that talked about totals. And as of noon today, it hadn't been updated since November 8th. Ironically, there has been no update regarding the pool fiasco either. Public would like to have some confirmation that you're working on it or that there is a process, because there was an awful lot of unhappy aquatic folks here a couple months ago. That's all I'll say about that, because right now I need to see some data. I'd like to see data, too. And in reference to your cookie cutter student population projections, it was recently reported that Michigan had the fewest babies born since 1940s, which is not aligned with your expectation of a stable school population for the next 10 years. I think that needs a reality check. I wish I could give back my extra time and get closer to the five minutes that we had in the pre-pandemic levels, but I guess not everything is trying to return to normal. And finally, Jeff, congratulations on your retirement. You are now off the clock.
Well done. Well, that was, that was well done. Good job, y'all.
Sorry, I had to compose myself for a second. That was, well done. That was everybody that signed up ahead of time. Anybody else like to address the board? Welcome. Please state your name and then.
Virginia Luz.
Sorry?
Virginia Luz.
Thank you.
Good evening. Well, and a taxpayer, my rent is really got hit, so let's build a new school, I say. The only thing I know with the new things and changing, I will ask the board something different than what is the subject right now, because it's the only moment I'm allowed to talk. I am a green card holder, and my kids, too. So since we have a new target, please take my kids and my family from the Spanish, because I go into the citizen path. And when you need documents, don't mind to reach out to me, please. I will appreciate that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Item number 11, administrative services. Item 11.1 are the meeting minutes from January 7th, 2025, which I have. Members present were myself, Jen Ringold, and John Lauterbach, as well as Penny Miller-Nelson and Ken Weaver. We talked about graduation credit requirement policy 5409 update, personal finance credit requirement. The committee discussed the new personal finance .5 credit requirement for high school graduation. The district will implement this requirement as reflected in a major change proposal presented to the Board of Education in December. The administration's recommendation is to increase the MPS graduation credit requirement by .5 credits to a total of 22.5 credits, which was discussed. The recommendation to update policy 5409 will be taken to the board in January. Additionally, we discussed the free application for federal student aid. The committee discussed a Michigan Department of Education grant opportunity, which would like, which would include making FAFSA completion a graduation requirement. The district will continue exploring this opportunity and bring forth recommended policy change. And then finally, the facility, also discussed facility improvement bond program. The committee discussed the upcoming proposal. There's no meeting scheduled at this time as we meet as needed as administrative services. Item 11.2 for action, said policy update 5409. Penny?
Well, you just explained it, so thank you for that. I do have for your action tonight, our recommendation for a policy change. This is due to the change in state law, as President Roush just described. And the recommendation is to change policy 5409, which is academic credits and graduation. And the, in, the notable change is from 22 to 22.5 graduation credits for graduation because of the new personal finance requirement. The other change to that particular policy is making a notation that that is in effect starting with the graduating class of 2028, and all classes graduating prior to that will still be under the 22 credit requirement.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for item 11.2?
Move to approve the policy update for board policy 5409.
Support. Motion by Ringold, support by McFarland. Any discussion on 11.2? All in favor of approving item 11.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, curriculum instruction and assessment. 12 point, did we have any? No?
We don't. There was not a December meeting.
Okay, thank you. Item 12.1 for action, major change proposals. Ken?
Yeah, we have tonight two major change proposals, one being the economics personal finance, taking that class from .5 to 1.0 and still being a semester class. And then we have the implementation of the English language development classes in the secondary schools. That was the two of them.
Thank you. A motion for 12.1?
Is that moved?
Motion by Lauterbach, support by McFarland. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item 12.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 12.2 for information, sex education by annual report. Ken?
Yeah, Public Act 165 of 2004 requires the Board of Ed to receive a report every two years regarding the attainment of program goals and objectives in sex ed. The Sex Ed Advisory Board also reviewed it as well, too, in the last week, and it is now in your midst.
Thank you. And that is in our, in our board packet. Item 13, finance facilities and operations. 13.1, finance facilities and operations study committee meeting notes from January 6th, 2025.
Thanks, Phil. The FFO committee met on January 6th of 2025. Members present were Brad Blazy, Scott McFarland, Penny Miller-Nelson, Brian Bruton, Anna Womack, and me. We discussed the November financials. They were reviewed with the committee, and variances from year to year were discussed. Committee discussed options for a new robotics facility. Committee also discussed property and casualty insurance, as well as the drinking water management plan, which was voted on tonight. And finally, we discussed the upcoming facility improvement bond proposal. Meeting adjourned at 5:56 PM.
Thanks, Jen. Item 13.2 for action, gifts totaling $7,000. Anna?
Yes, we have one item tonight totaling $7,800, requiring your acceptance on behalf of the board this evening. This item is a support for the softball shed at Midland High from Cheryl Potter, and we would request that you approve accepting this gift.
Thank you. I have a motion for item 13.2.
I'll move to approve item 13.2.
Support.
Motion by McFarland, support by Horowitz. Any discussion? All in favor of approving generous gift of $7,800, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 13.3 for information, gifts totaling $14,110.87. Anna?
The total amount of gifts listed The total amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $14,110.87. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from support for robotics teams at Dow High, Midland High, and Jefferson, to support for career and college advising events at both high schools. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through board correspondence upon your behalf. We are grateful for our community's support for our students and our programs.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our donors. Item 14, Human Resources, 14.1 for information. Jeff?
Thank you. The board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the following families. First, the family of Ms. Martha Alice Briggs. She passed away December 9th, 2024. During her tenure with MPS, Martha was employed as a secretary in various buildings, including Midland High School, Transportation Department, Carpenter Elementary, Northeast Middle School. She retired in 1988 with 21 years of service. Also extend our sympathy to the family of Mr. Nigel Summerford. He passed away December 13th, 2024. Nigel was a dedicated robotics team mentor for eight years. He spent countless hours in MPS Robotics Centers, mentoring elementary and middle school students, helping with robotics teams to design, build, and program robots. Also to the family of Ms. Shirley Witty. She passed away December 29th, 2024. Shirley was employed with MPS as a paraprofessional, office professional, booking clerk, office and technical professional, and she worked at various buildings throughout her employment as well, including Mills Elementary, Dow High School, and the Administration Building. Shirley retired in 2004 with 21 years of service. And then finally, to the family of Mr. Albert Starr. He passed away December 30th, 2024. Albert was employed with MPS as an economics and psychology teacher, as well as a counselor, both of these roles at Midland High School. He retired in 1993 with 33 years of service.
Thank you, Jeff. Item 15, Correspondence from the Board of Education to the following individuals and organizations as listed in your agenda packet. Item 16, Scheduled Activities for Information. The regular board meetings are listed in your agenda packet, noting that February 18th again is a Tuesday. Item 17, Studies Session Discussion, 17.1. Are there any points of clarification or comments from the board members? Now I will turn the floor over to Penny.
I just want to say thank you for all this spread.
Yeah. It is School Board Appreciation Month and all these ways that we appreciate you. So we'll just take a moment to share that these lovely baskets are from Heartball Service Partner, and they wanted to make sure that you would be those in gratitude through your service to our school, our students, our district. You have a book in front of you as well, and as much as you might want to take that with you, you should know that those are several grandmas at the end. We wanted you to see, though, that these are the books that were chosen this year in your honor, and these will be distributed out to our elementary buildings. And there's a little sticker in the front that indicates that it's in recognition of our Midland Public Schools Board. I just want to add a few additional words. You know, service on the school board, especially recently, has been a lot of hard work and a lot of your time and energy, and it doesn't go unnoticed. It's really interesting that seven members, and we have such an array of experience. Welcome to the School Board meeting, your first meeting. And then we have members who have been with us for quite some time, 12 years, I think. So in totality, you represent depth of knowledge about our district, and it's just really valuable. Your leadership is really valuable. This year's recognition theme from the Michigan Association of School Boards is celebrating magic in education. And they have a lovely graphic that goes with it. And when Katie and I were talking about this, well, that is lovely, but there's something a little misleading about the word magic, right? It's not really magic. It's dedication, it's hard work, it's service, just not on your part, but on all of our team and our parents and our students. And so there really is no special potion or cauldron of magic. It's you. It's you, and we really appreciate your dedication and hard work. So on behalf of all of us, thank you for choosing to be a school board member, particularly through this really important period that we have. We hope that you enjoy the cards. Sarah, those were from Central Park Elementary. You love it when people make cards, so those are yours to take and enjoy. On another note of celebration, and I'm only going to say a little bit. Jeff really doesn't like being spotless.
I'm so sorry I didn't have my mic on. Somebody should have nudged me. It's Jeff's last meeting, and we sure are going to miss him. I have a few just highlights I want to share with you. Jeff began his career here in Midland Public Schools in 2002. Fact check me, please, Jeff. And interestingly, he was hired as a science teacher at Midland High School, which is the school from which he graduated. So it was kind of a full circle moment for him. And if you know, education wasn't his exact first career choice, but he had some moments along the way that really drew him back to education, and we are so thankful that happened. Jeff has served in a variety of roles in Midland schools. You were a teacher, a coach, a department head. You chaired multiple committees. You were an assistant principal and principal at the middle school level, an assistant principal and principal at the high school level, and an associate superintendent. Did I miss anything in there? I mean, there isn't much more to add, right? And I often go to Jeff because he knows our district so well and our community so well, and he's lived a lot of lives in each of those positions. The one thing that we all know about Jeff is he prioritizes students and always has in these roles. When I talk with colleagues from years gone by, that is one thing that they always note about Jeff is his care for students, his desire to really partner with families to serve students in the best possible ways. Jeff is calm, cool, and collected. We had a fun little activity as a team last year, and I gave out paper plate awards. I don't know if you've ever done that at your team meetings, but Jeff got that award, the calm of the sea, right? He is the one that we can count on even when things are feeling a little hot, that he just, he's that calm, and he brings us all a sense of calm. And some of us need it a little more than others. Brian thinks that was directed at him. Jeff has seen a lot happen and has been a leader, particularly in this role, through a lot of important moments. We've heard a little bit about COVID, but Jeff was instrumental in partnering with the curriculum team on that remote learning plan and then really spearheading, along with the team, our plan to reopen school and get students back in classrooms with teachers. He has been very influential in our safety plans, and as that emerged for us as a district, really helped lead the development of those safety plans, among many other things. When we closed Central Middle School, you were the principal at Northeast and really welcomed those students and families with open arms and invested a lot in bringing that school community together. So Jeff, we thank you for your years of service, for the way you care about students and your colleagues, and we wish you the best.
I wasn't expecting Penny to go through that, but I do appreciate the sendoff. And no, I am very fortunate, consider myself blessed to have worked here. As you heard Ken mention during his presentation, in his short time here, he's seen all the great things that happen. And I fortunately have seen them since 2002 as an employee, but had a chance to experience those things as a student, too. So not leaving the community by any means, going to still be around. And I'll be retired for two days, and then I'll start my new job out at the West Midland Family Center, working with kids and families out there. So for me personally, just change has always been something I've looked forward to. I've embraced change, and as Penny read that list, what you probably wouldn't realize is that in most of those roles, I served in them for about five or six years. And so it's been six years in this one. I'm starting to get the itch. I have to do something different. So no, I am very fortunate for the people I've worked with, the relationships here, and it's an amazing place to work, and I'm just looking forward to the next, the next thing. So thank you.
Great.
Yep.
A couple of other quick celebrations. You might have picked up the news story or noticed on social media that we have a teacher who earned National Board Certification. Amy Rankin is a teacher at Midland High, and that is quite a feat. So I want to take a moment to acknowledge her and celebrate that accomplishment. It's a rather lengthy and rigorous process, and she worked through that beautifully. And we just want to wish her a hearty congratulations. If you had a chance last week, we had two exceptional events with Midland High's Rhapsody and Dow High's Ren Fair, back-to-back nights of just amazing talent of our high school students. And those are always really fun experiences. And just a quick shout out to the Midland Center for the Arts for continuing to partner with us on that. I'll use that as just a note to share that the, is continuing conversations with us regarding how we can provide a little more opportunity for students to perform on that bigger stage. And I know that was some concern that was brought forth through our initial facility planning process. So I want to assure you, those conversations are continuing, and Anna is leading that effort on our behalf. Robotics was another area of, we continue to pursue opportunities across the community to identify potential space for our robotics teams. We know that they have a home right now over on Wheeler in that facility, and they're good there for a bit, but we know that we need a longer term solution, and we are actively pursuing that. On the note of the aquatics community, kind of thinking through the list of all of those that we wanted to follow up on, we are actively engaged in conversation with them. All of those partners, the city, Greater Midland, and Midland Public Schools, along with the Dolphins, are continuing conversations. And actually, next week, we are invited to a meeting of the Dolphins to share some information about this proposal and continue to build and enhance that relationship and find solutions for their needs. So I want to assure you all as board members that we're doing our work to keep those discussions moving forward and finding solutions. The last thing I'll just offer is yesterday was such a wonderful day, not only because we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. and his legacy, but we had students engaging in volunteer activities across our community. And one of those special ones was both of our high school. We had students together, about 130 of them, over at Central Auditorium in that big upstairs conference room, making cards, Valentine's cards that senior services can distribute with their meals on Valentine's Day. And it was just a really heartwarming event. Ken was there as well to see those students interacting across town, really giving their time to make very heartfelt cards. And if you get a chance to check out our social media pages, you can see some examples of the cards and the really sweet messages that they took the time to put in there. And I just think that connects back to what Ken talked about. You know, part of our success here in Midland Public Schools is that. It's those moments when our students shine outside of the classroom and are really contributing members to our community. On that note, I'll just double down on what you said. I want our community to know that as we move into this information campaign for our facility improvement bond proposal, that no community member should go without having their questions answered. We are going to work really hard to get out there and share information through multiple channels. And we welcome phone calls, emails, and we'll meet with anyone who wants to talk about this.
Thanks, Penny. Jeff, just want to say congratulations on behalf of the board. And I just want to add one piece of information for the public that they don't get to see. So as many are aware, Jeff manages our multi-tiered system of supports, and he's really maybe in charge of or focused on those wraparound services that the district provides to make sure that our students are coming into the building with their best self. And I think, Jeff, that's one of the things that as a board member we get to see behind the scenes, whether it's following up on students that are having a hard time or made a mistake. And every single time, you approach those students with compassion and care. And more importantly, how do we restore what happened and prevent what happened in the future, but make sure that that student got back into the classroom so that they still achieve success? So I want to thank you for that and thank you for that, you know, approach that you always took to the job. And Nathan, you've got some big shoes to fill, but he's not going far. So I'm sure, I'm sure he can, you can always make a phone call, so. With that, time to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion. Motion by Lauterbach, support by McFarland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand adjourned. Stand adjourned.